Right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 4 council meeting of Fleet Town Council. I trust everyone is well. We are tonight, for the first time, streaming our meeting on YouTube, so that as many residents who wish to can follow our proceedings. Can I therefore please ask that all members turn off their microphones when they're not involved in any discussions to reduce the risk of feedback or random noise distorting reception for everyone? If you wish to contribute to any debate tonight, will you please use your hands up when it's available? If not, please put your hand up on screen. Janet and I will keep track of those of you wishing to come into the debate and we'll call you in as and when required. We will later on be using the Hands Up facility for voting, as we've done in the past, and the voting will be in the order of those in favour, those against, and those abstaining. After we've checked the count on each one of those votes, will you please take your hands down so that we can double check that we've got everybody's vote? Thank you. A recording of this meeting will be retained for 24 hours for the meeting's clerk to double check the minutes of the meeting. Then after, the recording will be taken down. Just on a topical issue, as you're all aware, the debate over pedestrianisation continues. I can only commend that if you have any views on the project, be it positive or negative, will you please post them on Hart's dedicated website? And these comments will be used in the final appraisal of the scheme, which will be determined by a member of Hart's cabinet by the end of this month. So the decision on the continuation or not of the scheme will be determined by the end of this month. I have received some comments, both from members and from residents, on the quality of our Saturday market, which has caused us some concern. And I can assure you that we have called the operator in for a meeting this Friday to discuss the situation with them and hopefully improve the situation. There are one or two other issues I wanted to make, mostly positive tonight, but they're all covered under items on the agenda, and so I'll raise my points at that time. So we will move on to the formal agenda of the evening. But first of all, I would like to welcome councillor Ruth Hill to our first meeting. And I'd say I hope you are able to join in and contribute tonight. I look forward to that. Thank you. Suzanne, do we have any apologies tonight, please?
Just from councillor Pearce, who has technical issues.
Is everyone happy? That is a continuing problem, as you know, that we can't connect him onto the system. Are you happy that we accept that as a continuing apology? Everyone happy with that? Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest on any matters on the agenda tonight? You have? Could you hold your hand up? Thank you. Questions from the public? Received just today, a question from Mr Russell Hunt. He's not attending the meeting, but we will read his question, which is: "As stated in a recent newsletter, the concept of FTC building a new Harlington or refurbishing the old one is dead. Any future developments of the civic quarter will be initiated by Hart, not Fleet Town Council. By the end of this financial year, that's March 2021, FTC will have collected some £2 million to fund this now extinct project and spent some £500,000. It would be a grave breach of trust to divert these remaining funds to another project or to use them to fund an HDC project unless equivalent per capita funding was contributed by all other parishes in the district. Therefore, one, will the full council instruct the finance committee that the additional new Harlington precept is to be removed from the rate set by FTC for 2021/22? Two, will the unspent funds in the Harlington Reserve now be returned to taxpayers? And three, if, as the council leader has stated, the funds cannot be returned, will FTC publish the legal advice on which this decision is? Now, in accordance with our understanding orders, as we've only received the question today, we're not obliged to respond, but we can give a written response. But I can, on your behalf, respond to a number of these issues because I had previously been in email dialogue with Mr Hunt and a number of these issues had been addressed, but he obviously has not accepted my response to him. One being that, as far as this council is concerned, the concept of building a new Harlington is not dead. It is something that we've said in the past. We are waiting the outcome of Hart District Council's civic quarter development proposals. And equally, when he says, "Any future developments of the civic quarter will be initiated by Hart, not Fleet Town Council", that to a degree is true, that we are an invited attendee at their working groups on the development of that, but the scheme is to be developed at some future point. And certainly, the financing of that overall scheme is something that is going to be critical to the outcome of the consultation. So, as I said to him in my email before, the principle of a new Harlington is not dead. It has been suspended because we want to work with Hart on looking at the civic quarter development. And again, the financing of that civic quarter development is something that is a future discussion. On his first question, which is, "Will the full council instruct the finance committee that the additional new Harlington precept is removed from the rate set by FTC", we cannot instruct the council to make any decision until it's actually been debated within council. We are just in the process of developing our budgets for the coming financial year. And in fact, there's an item on the agenda later tonight. And those budget discussions will go on within the working group. And the proposals for the coming years' finances will be brought back to council for preliminary discussion in November. On his question two, "Will the unspent funds in the Harlington Reserve now be returned to taxpayers", the immediate answer is no. I gave him a response originally in an email saying that we had sought advice and we were told that monies collected in a precept could not be returned to taxpayers. And I said I would just get confirmation on that to satisfy him. We have been in conversation and discussions with the SLCC, which is the Society for Local Council Clerks, who you may all know provide advice and guidance to council clerks, both on legal matters and technical issues related to the operation of councils. And they directed us to the Local Government Finance Act 1992, and particularly to clause 42, where it is set out, and we will put this in the minutes, but fundamentally, the clause says that if a precept, as decided, cannot be pursued, so in other words, if there was a project within a precept which can't be continued, then as soon as reasonably practical after that time, issue a precept or precepts in substitution so as to give effect to those calculations. So the council is able to revise its precept and redirect monies. It says, "Any precept issued in substitution under subsection one above may be issued in accordance with section 40, or as the case may be, section 41 above, but section five of that section 40 shall be ignored for this purpose. Where a precepting authority issues a precept in substitution, a new precept, anything paid to it by reference to the precept which it submitted, the old precept, shall be treated as paid by reference to the new precept. If the amount stated in the old precept exceeds that of the new precept, the following shall apply: as regards anything paid if it would not have been paid had the amount of the old precept been same as the old or new precept. It shall be repaid to the billing authority." So if we couldn't come up with a precept that actually used the funds previously supplied for a project, so we didn't come up with a precept which was the same amount, any monies that would be underutilised have to be repaid to the billing authority who originally paid that. And it says, "In any other case, it shall, as the precepting authority determines, either be repaid or credited against any subsequent liability of the billing authority in respect of any precept of the precepting authority." So again, what it means is if we decided that a way of distributing that money was to not increase or reduce a precept in the future, that is an option open to the council. There is no legal liability under this clause to return the money to taxpayers. The other thing that we're advised of as well is that there is no hypophication in the UK tax system. And so no taxes are absolutely dedicated to any one item. Because equally, how could any of the council operated over the last few months under the Covid regulations? Monies had to be redirected under an emergency. So his third question was, "If, as the council leader has stated, the funds cannot be returned, will FTC publish the legal advice?", I'm saying that is the advice and we will publish it in our minutes. So hopefully, I have answered Mr Hunt's question. But we will draft that into the minutes. Are there any other questions, Janet?
No, no other questions.
Thank you. So item four of the agenda is minutes of the previous meeting. To receive and approve as a record, the minutes of the council meeting held on the 2nd of September.
Excuse me, councillor Schofield. Councillor Oliver has got his hand up. And it was up before, I think, for the previous question.
Councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you, chairman. Your response to Mr Hunt, who I know quite well because he lives not 30 yards from me.
Right.
One of the, I think what you did miss out in your answer, chairman, was that the precept was raised not for a new Harlington, but was for a new or refurbished Harlington. And whatever happens with the redevelopment, we need to think about continuing the existing Harlington and also refurbishing it if we don't get a new one. So I think the option of returning the money is only viable if we intend to close the Harlington and shut that part of our operation down.
Thank you. Yes, the original, I just happen to have it here, my constant companion. The original notice went out was the refurbish or replace. They were the options that were available for that. Thank you for that clarification. We'll make sure that's included. Thank you. Right, item four, minutes of the meeting. 2nd of September, page 1 is standard page. Page 2. And page 8. No comments? Is everyone happy that I sign those as a true record? Could you just show hands, please, physical or otherwise? Okay. Sue, I didn't, Sue Tilly didn't see a hand, were you?
Bob, it is up.
Right. It is not showing on my screen. Thank you, Sue.
Showing on mine. Okay.
Okay, I will sign those. Thank you very much. "To receive resolutions and consider approval of recommendations for the following committees and to return to committees any issues", there was the Development Control Committee of the 14th of September. The only thing I would add on development control is I did have an email from a resident about this article I put in the latest Town Talk about the small flats, saying, "Was it not correct that the government had now corrected that situation?" And I responded saying, "It has in principle. The government is going to pass secondary legislation to ensure that permitted development conversions of offices meet minimum space standards, but we don't know when they're going to pass secondary legislation. And until they do, unfortunately, any applications go through under the current terms." So those two developments in Fleet that were very small flats can proceed if the developer so wishes. RLA Committee of the 16th of September. Are there any comments you wish to pass back to the chairman of RLA on those minutes?
Councillor Schofield, councillor Oliver's got his hand up.
Sorry, it's not, sorry, Alan, it's not showing on the screen. I'll keep looking.
I'll put my hand up as well then.
No comments, please.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I just wanted to ask yourself or the chairman of RLA about Fleet Town Council, sorry, Fleet Football Club. I know there's been another further exchange of letters. Have we had anything back? Or are we in contact with Hart about any nuisance element? Because I think we need to try to draw that issue between the resident and the football club to a close if we possibly can. It's in the last, I think, section 15 of the RLA minutes. Councillor Inchcombe.
Janet, are you able to say something about what's been happening?
Yeah, we haven't as yet been back to being Hart for a nuisance, to look at the nuisance. I don't think I've had a response back from Fleet Town Football Club. I will check it and I will come back to you on that. We will check that. But we can go ahead and go to Hart District Council for them to go around and have a look at the nuisance, environmental health.
Just to let you know, Alan, we did receive a letter from them, which basically suggested that they knew nothing about the nuisance, which was a bit of an interesting stance to take. So yeah, we're waiting to hear now what their response is to our response to that, basically.
Okay.
Councillor Wildsmith would also like to speak.
It's just a point for the chairman, as I believe he's running on like the multiple images of people. You need to open the participant pane to be able to see everyone's hand.
Sorry, Peter, go on.
So if you've got more than the nine boxes, it won't come up, the hand won't come up on my picture. But if you have the participant pane on your right hand of your screen, you'll be able to see them.
Thank you.
Have we finished with that, Alan?
Yes, I think we have, Paul, because I realise that we've had a letter back from the football club. I don't think they didn't realise that they had a nuisance element in their lights. It was just that the only, we only have one resident that regards this as a nuisance at the moment. And so before, I think, before they want to start spending £1,000 on a cherry picker, they want to understand what the real issue is, which I do believe it is an issue for the resident. But what they have to do to actually clear it, otherwise they'll be just going round in circles. That's all. I think we just have to keep the pedal to the metal, as it were, to try to get this resolved quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we will follow up with that, Alan, and say, and press on and try and impress on them. As you say, it is one single resident that is significantly affected by their lighting, but wasn't in the past. Okay, there's no other comments. We'll move to item five, which is to receive any updates from Hampshire County Council or Hart District Council on matters that could be of concern to Fleet Town Council. So would our county councillors who are present like to raise or advisers of any developments that will be of interest? Adrian, do you want to come in on that one first?
Yes, I'm happy to. Thank you, chairman. Just a couple of points. Members are aware that there has been an issue with transport from Ansel's Farm to Fleet Infant and Velmy Junior Schools the last couple of years. There was a lot of concern when the school bus escort had to stop because of Covid. And then a few weeks later, a few days later, we had the lockdown, so then it wasn't an issue. But it was clear that she couldn't return because of her age. She wasn't going to return to that role. I'm pleased to say that the county council pulled out all the stops and found a replacement. So the bus does now have an escort. His name is Jeremy, I understand. I haven't met him. The other issue is that we had a briefing yesterday for county councillors in the district on all of the county council schools and the issues and challenges facing the schools. I think we're fortunate that most of our schools in Fleet and Hart as a whole are good, well-performing schools, and there aren't too many issues in terms of performance. One issue of concern has been how many children would return to school when the schools reopened at the beginning of term. And across Hampshire, and it's certainly true in Hart as well, the return rates have been well above the national average. But the other issue that goes with that is where Covid crops up. And there have been a few cases of individuals being tested positive for Covid in schools around Hampshire. And some of those are in Hart. I won't name schools because that would be a very unhelpful thing to do. But every case, certainly in Hart, the individuals have been identified quickly. Track and trace, if you like, done internally within the school to make sure that anyone who associated with that person was tested and made sure that there wasn't Covid on a wider basis. And then the person involved, in most cases, a student, but in some cases, staff, sent home to isolate for two weeks. And as far as I know, there hasn't been a case of a secondary, you know, another person, if you like, testing positive after the individual has been identified. It's inevitable with thousands of people attending schools that there will be cases like this that crop up. The important thing is that the schools have good processes in place to react quickly when it happens. And at the moment, all the evidence is that that's what's happening. But obviously, it's something we'll all need to keep a very close eye on. That's all I've got tonight, chairman, unless anybody wants to ask me any questions.
Are there any questions for Adrian on those couple of issues? No, thank you. Thank you. It's very useful. Thanks very much indeed. John, and then obviously Steve and councillor Forster see down the bar. John, would you like, John, councillor Benison?
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. Yes, if I could just pick up on what Adrian's just said. I was at the briefing as well. Primary schools, 97% of children were attending school of the primary schools and 93% of secondary schools. So that's way above what the national average is. And obviously agree with Adrian that we've got some exceptional schools and they're doing very well. I hope that the town council received an email from Susanna Hope, the flood officer for Hart. We had some, I think it was, Storm Alex come through on the 2nd and 3rd, and there was some flooding around the area. And I can only impress upon people to report that flooding through the correct channels, this, the online flood survey for Hart, because we need evidence to eventually get some money from the flood authority, well, from the Environment Agency. Which brings me neatly on to some climate change issues. I know there's some councillors who are very keen on this. There was a paper that went to Cabinet last week, which is trying to explain how county are going to try and remove the carbon from their workings of the council and reduce their carbon. They're going to put it into five-year plans. They're going to try and have about 20% less every five years. But this is a working document and it will be changed, I suspect, frequently as things come on stream. Things are changing very, very quickly with that. But at least we've got a starter now for moving forward with our quest to be carbon neutral by 2050. Just quickly, the libraries are changing the times of opening and Fleet Library will be slowly moving towards the set hours that has been agreed coming up towards Christmas. That should all be in place. And there was a question at full council a couple of weeks ago about fly tipping, which I know people are, again, interested in here. And apparently, in Hampshire, the amount of fly tipping over the period when Covid's been around, so I'm guessing towards the end of March through to now, it's less than what it was last year. Although I suspect in individual cases or some areas, it may seem as though it's just the same. That's all, chairman. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. John, are there any questions on the topics that John raised there, please? No, very clear. Thank you. Onto councillor Forster.
Good evening, chairman councillors. Thank you. The other two county councillors have covered an awful lot, so thank you for that. If I cover what they didn't, I wasn't able to attend the school briefing, but I had a specific one-to-one with the head of service there. And I've been working with a couple of schools. We've had a couple of incidents, but related in particular to the pedestrianisation with schoolchildren riding wantonly and furiously, was the word that was used, through the area. So that's been raised with the school travel team who've briefed the schools. And I understand they've had words with all the pupils, so that shouldn't reoccur. And anecdotal feedback is that there has been a change and no incident since, which is really encouraging. The pedestrianisation has also displaced a lot of traffic onto many local roads, in particular Albert Street and Eltham Road, have seen significant, huge increases, as well as when there are traffic queues or heavy traffic, a lot of issues with speeding vehicles. I'm conscious that we haven't managed to deploy the Hart speed indicator devices for various reasons. But I'm pleased to say I spoke with the head of highways at Hampshire this morning, and he's confirmed he's trying for this week, but more likely for next week, to have Hampshire's speed reminder warnings erected on both Albert Street in both directions and Eltham Road, again, in both directions, hopefully. So that might act as a way to educate some of the drivers and remove some of the excessive speeds. We've had speeds reported there of over 60 miles an hour in 30 mile an hour limits and over 50 in 20 mile an hour zones. That is callous and reckless. In terms of the pedestrianisation, just an update on that. A decision, if anyone isn't aware, was made at full council that councillor Cockrell would make a final decision before the end of this month, whether to keep it or request its removal before the end of the month. I guess that probably means around the 23rd, 24th, at maybe the cabinet meeting. He will consult with the nine Fleet Town councillors, as well as gathering extra evidence, data from the company that Hart has retained to ask businesses for their views, because that's very split. It's very emotive for some of them, as well as feedback to Fleet Road. That is the only mechanism that Hart currently has for feeding back, other than emailing individual councillors or officers. But it's the fleetroad@hart.gov.uk email that requests whether someone is supportive, opposes it, or has any suggestions on what could be done in either circumstance. So I hope that's helpful. I do have some stats on incidents that have occurred on side roads. There's been no major incidents, and whatever safety issues have been raised, Hart officers have worked with Hampshire Highways and have made changes to the scheme, completely separate from the Fleet Road changes. And we've not had any serious injuries or major incidents. But that is constantly being monitored. And if there are issues that can't be addressed, then Hampshire County Council, through my veto, and officers would take action. But the preference is to take remedial action and ensure that the roads are kept safe. And there's a number of things that are underway already to progress that. Thank you, councillors.
And just to clarify, Stephen, something you said there, you mentioned nine Fleet Town councillors. They're the nine district councillors covering Fleet Ward, not Fleet Town Council as such.
Yes, I'm sorry for that. Yes, I did mean the Hart District councillors, the three for Fleet West, three for Fleet Central, and three for Fleet East.
Thank you.
Councillor Schofield, councillor Tilly would like to speak.
Yes, please. Question for councillor Forster, please. Steve, I'm on the Hart District Council's sounding board for the Covid recovery, representing the parishes. And one of the things that was raised was speeding really across the district from a number of parishes. Is this something that Hampshire is looking into? Because this seemed to be a focus during the pandemic, that seemed to be a question along with a lot of fly tipping for a number of parishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll answer that if I may. Yes, Sue, I'm aware that some parishes have got repeated problems. There's problems with antisocial driving, for instance, in Eltham, which has attracted police attention. For speeding or any other driving issues, it is a police matter generally. If there are specific issues relating to road safety, then Hampshire Highways can make changes, but they don't get involved in the enforcement side whatsoever. That is a police matter. They can help, as in this instance, although I would hope that if there are any Hart parishes that have problems, they could liaise with the highways officers at Hart, who have, I believe, four or six of the speed indicator displays, although they haven't generally been deployed for around three or four years. I know that Fleet Town Council was getting a member of one of the teams trained to be able to deploy those as and when they were needed. But in the meantime, I did ask Hampshire to step in. Hampshire only has around 20 or 30 of them for the whole of the county, so it's quite difficult to get them. But officers were very supportive when they saw the evidence of the speeding and traffic issues on the affected roads.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Any members of Hart District Council would like to add anything that is pressing, that it would be useful for us to know at this time? Councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Chairman. Right, there's a couple of things. One is, I just want to reinforce the issue of flooding, because we have the multi-agency flooding meeting early next week. And it will be very helpful, because I think it's been quite quiet in the, in Hart District over the last kind of nine months. And then we had Storm Alex come through. So we really would like to get all the input we can to, when we have Hampshire and the Environment Agency in the same room, to talk about flooding. So anything that any town councillor can do about bringing flooding issues to our attention will be very helpful, rather than waiting to the flood, the parish forum. Secondly, is CCTV. One of the issues we've been wrestling with in, at the district, is about funding, and also about how we're going to recover from Covid. And one of the issues we've been looking at is non-statutory services. Now, one of the non-statutory services is actually the running of our CCTV service. Now, we know that it's valued greatly by a number of parishes who make use of the service, and also by members of the public, because it helps them feel secure. And it's been monitored. So we had a paper last week, and for those who weren't able to actually look at that, we've made the decision to continue the service, but we're going to have to move supplier for our control centre to Runnymede Borough Council, because Rushmore have taken the decision to move their service to Runnymede as well. As you know, we were running a shared service with Rushmore, but the costs of upgrading their control centre were such that they felt it was no longer tenable. So they are outsourcing their service to Runnymede. And we continue, and we are going to follow that lead. So I'm very pleased, because I was a strong advocate of making sure that we keep, for Fleet particularly, the CCTV, because I think it does help greatly with people feeling safe and secure in the high street with our vibrant, shall we say, night time economy. So that's one issue that I know people were concerned about with the future of CCTV. I won't go into pedestrianisation, because councillor Forster has covered that quite succinctly and fully. All I would, shall we say, suggest is that people do make their views known through the email that he's already mentioned, and also contact individual councillors, because I know lots of councillors, sorry, residents have been contacting me personally, because I've been looking at the traffic implications. We do know that speeding is an issue. But when you look at the data, because one of the things that we are going to do is to be driven by the data of traffic, not by people's preconceptions. So we are monitoring speeds in Clarence Road, Albert Street, Conall Road, Elverton Road, Church Road. The facilities there are to monitor speeds as well as volumes of traffic. But they do really focus on average speeds in terms of the data we get out of that. We do know that speeding cars, individuals, especially when there's not a lot of traffic on the road, such as pre, when we were in lockdown, that speeding became a real issue for people, because with quiet roads and very few people out there, some people took advantage of that and were absolutely reckless in some of our residential streets. And I would concur with councillor Forster about, we need to bring those people to task somehow. Unfortunately, the police don't have unlimited resources, and it is a police issue, speeding. And they cannot really set up speed traps in any areas, except where there is a known, shall we say, risk in terms of previous incidents or previous accidents. And I know from my own experience, we have, say, a speed Amazon Crookham Road about once every six months, because that's where people have taken, there's been accidents down that road. So I don't really like having to think about having, there being an accident before the police take action. And we're doing what we can to try to reinforce allocation of resources, if we can, to look at residential speeding traffic, because we know it is a real concern to many people. I don't have anything else, but happy to answer questions if it's on any of those three topics from Fleet councillors.
There you go.
Councillor Schofield, there's councillor Wildsmith, councillor Chenery, and councillor Tilly who would like to speak.
Take them in that order, please. Councillor Wildsmith.
Yeah, my only point was going to be, as we know, some of the things the district have been doing at the moment have been quite divisive, and just sort of a plea to all members, really, particularly looking coming up. Of course, Saturday is World Mental Health Day, and that for everyone to bear in mind and sort of act as leaders and set an example when we discuss these topics with people, that we do it in a kind, considerate way, and that we don't take, we don't go, use the wrong language ourselves in doing it. And so we can set the tone for Fleet as a whole. When we do debate any of these divisive topics, we do it in the correct way. As I've sort of said to various people on a number of occasions, getting nasty over someone because people don't necessarily agree with your point of view could be that sort of difference between someone, if they're having a bad day, could be the difference between life and death to someone, and push them over the edge. So just as councillors, for us to sort of help set the tone over any of these discussions. So it's done in a sort of calm and considered way. And I'd hope we can sort of do that between one another and between residents as well. And just urge all councillors to sort of set an example.
Councillor Wildsmith, I'll take that as a comment, not a question, if I may.
Yeah, it was more a comment following on from yourselves, yeah.
All right.
Councillor Tilly.
Yes, question for councillor Oliver again. Alan, can you confirm it was Rushmore who made the decision about the CCTV, and therefore was the deciding factor in us going to Runnymede?
Yeah, I can confirm that. They took the decision to close their control centre and to outsource. And so we were left between a rock and a hard place, which is either to stop the service or look for an alternative supplier. And Runnymede were the most, when we contacted other councils and private suppliers, they were the most cost effective that we could move to. And it will cost us money to move the infrastructure, you know, connections and networks to allow Runnymede to do it. But we're confident that the service that we provide will be maintained, as we have with Rushmore. So access to plate to services such as Pubwatch, yeah? And I know Pubwatch have found it very helpful to have direct access to CCTV. That will be maintained, and we're trying to make sure that the service is as good as we had from Rushmore.
Thank you. Can I have a follow-up, please? Is Rushmore also moving to Runnymede?
They are.
Thank you. And councillor Chenery, can we hear you now, councillor Chenery?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm not a lip reader.
No, unfortunately. Thanks, Graham. Sorry. We'll have to find out what your technical problem is, Graham. Sorry about that.
Could I suggest that councillor Chenery sends me an email with his question, and I'll respond to him via that? Okay, Graham?
Thank you for that offer. Thank you. Thank you. Right. Thank you very much for those comments tonight. Some useful information there. Thank you. We're moving on to part one now of the agenda for items for decision. And item six, this is a bit of a bureaucratic item. But as you know, at our annual meeting, we always allocate members to various committees and working groups, and we agree on the night on that allocation. As we have our new councillor, councillor Ruth Hill, she has made a request to join the committees, as noted on your agenda papers, that she would like to join the RLA Committee, the Harlington Civic Quarter Working Group, the Climate Change Working Group, and the Parks and Open Spaces Working Group. Does anybody have any issues whatsoever with councillor Hill joining those particular groups and committee? So can we resolve that that is agreed? We're nearly at a full house, plus hands up. Janet, have you got a count on that? It looks fine to me.
Yes, we have a majority.
Thank you. Councillor Hill, you are allocated to those committees and working groups, and we'll send out the adjusted papers in due course.
Thank you.
We'll obviously let you know when those meetings occur.
Yeah, thank you.
Item seven is Budget 2122. I'm going to ask the chairman of Policy and Finance Committee, but the Budget Working Group has been meeting under probably the most difficult circumstances due to the current Covid situation, where we're not going to meet this year's budget. But councillor Holt, I'll leave it to you.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Chairman. You know, the Budget Working Group's met twice in the last month or so. Obviously, in preparation for setting next year's budget, that as the chairman said, the first task was to review this year's budget with the impact of Covid. As a rough guide, the loss of the net contribution from the Harlington is best part of 20,000 per month. So it had a major impact on our bottom line. And to balance the budget, to do that, we will have to eat into our general reserves. In setting next year's budget, we've looked basically at two options. First one was that this year continues into next year, and could we survive on that in terms of the reserves? And the answer is just about yes. There will be a little bit left over at the end. Exactly how much is not quite, we're not quite sure about. But we shouldn't need to impact the Harlington Development Fund. But we will be without much in the way of reserves at the end of the second year. We think that's a bit too pessimistic. And we're not quite as optimistic as the current Prime Minister, but we hope that by the middle of next fiscal year, we will be back to something more like normal in terms of shows and so on. So at the moment, the, sorry? So the general manager of the Harlington and the town clerk are now reviewing their budgets in preparation for us to review those at the Policy and Finance Meeting on, I think, the Monday week, to see how that ends up at the end of the year. The reason we're bringing it to this evening's meeting is to really get your view on the precept. We've discussed it in the working group and feel that it might not be very appropriate at this stage in the town to actually at this stage in the town to actually talk about an increase in the precept. And that was the view of the group. However, I will remind you, by the end of next year, our reserves will be very low and the only way of building up reserves at the end of the day is to increase the council tax. But we will take the view of this group into our discussions and preparations for the budget. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Wildsmith and councillor Oliver would like to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Wildsmith, do you want to come in first?
Yeah, so my first point, and I think it probably links a little bit back to Mr Hunt's question at the beginning as well. And I think we need to be careful and mindful of the views of people at fleet over. We know now that the, obviously Hart is looking at Pacific Quarter regeneration, which likely we'd, we'd sort of work together on, but this is obviously going to be a slightly longer drawn out process. And based on the fact we could be a lot and large number of people in fleet who could be affected job wise or affected financially because of Covid, et cetera, do we look at potentially as regards the precept, at least for the next, next financial year, suspending the collection of a Harlington precept section on there to give people a little bit of breathing space and whilst we work out where we're doing? Another option on that as well, if we're looking, we're going to have an issue with reserves is that we may reduce that by, that equivalent by half, keep collecting half of it to allow our reserves to build back up. So I think it's something we need to look in and be, and bear in mind the overall financial situation individuals in the community may be in, although fleet is an affluent area for a lot of people who aren't necessarily particularly affluent and anywhere they can maybe get a little bit of a saving or something could be very beneficial to them.
Thank you, Peter. I just, for those members who weren't involved back in 16, 17 or have actually caught up with the figures, the Harlington reserve element of the fleet town council tax is £39.37 per bandee household. That's, that's the rate, Peter. But thank you, take note, the working group can take that back. Councillor Oliver.
Thank you, chairman, yeah. I hear what councillor Wildsmith says, that was very interesting, I hadn't thought of that option. But personally, I think that we need to maintain our emphasis on trying to develop, whether it's new or refurbished Harlington, community centre and arts centre, because I think post Covid, we will need that kind of facility for all our residents even more than we do now because it already hosts people like Fleet Phoenix and RBS. So I think we need to try to maintain that. I would actually cancel, as I'm not on part of policy and finance now, that we should think about freezing the precept this year because of the impact of Covid on, on our residents. We, to say to some extent that the council is immune to the, shall we say, the real pressures of businesses, because we have a precept where is other businesses have defined customers and so I, I do think we, we need to be conscious of the pressures under, for all our residents and our businesses are under at the moment. So I would cancel, I would definitely support a freeze on it. But one of the things I was, in terms of the budget preparation, I know we've been furloughed a number of staff and I think there's probably going to be another six months of, shall we say hiatus in terms of not providing the kind of shows and the experience that the Harlington needs to do. Have we thought, are we in a position now because of our budgetary constraints, that we have to think about our overall workforce? As hard as that may seem, have we considered the kind of staffing levels we need for the next six months if we're not going to provide the Harlington Community Theatre in its, in its current state, the shows? In the budget?
Can I comment on that, Mr Chairman? That particular issue councillor Oliver has been, is being considered as part of the process.
Thank you, Lesley. I'll trust to the good offices of the finance committee then.
Can I just add councillor Oliver as well, that I was going to bring it up in the Harlington item on the agenda, but I did go into the Harlington today to look at the auditorium with outer forest scaffolding in it, which was a huge relief to see it looking more like a theatre than it has done a forest of, say, scaffold tubes for the last several months. And Alex and his team have been sort of working hard on looking at the safe layouts in the, in the auditorium and looking at being able to re-establish some shows now as early as possible. And also, as you know, we are going to be installing the streaming equipment so that we can put on some, if you like, sort of virtual shows where there will be shows that can be streamed out to the public. So we're hoping that we can actually get the Harlington into working mode, certainly before the end of this month. And so in discussion with Alex, he is going to have to start to bring some of those staff back in.
Excellent.
But there will be income to offset the costs this time, not just pure cost.
Councillor Knight and councillor Tilly.
Please, in that order, councillor Wright.
Thank you, chairman. I just wanted to point to clarification really, possibly for everybody else as well as Ruth. Regarding the precept for the Harlington, I was led to believe over the previous months and years that that was ring fenced solely for the Harlington. Is that now not the case?
No, it is still the case.
Thank you.
No, that, on all our budgets and everything, that element of the income and retention is clearly identified in all our finances. Councillor Tilly.
I was just going to add that being somebody who put the jazz club into the Harlington, we're very excited at the prospect of doing a mix of streaming and live audience, probably, hopefully, fingers crossed, starting later this month. So we're very much looking forward to getting that back online. May not be as it was before, but with the mix of live audience and streaming to a paid audience, I think we're going to make a good start at recovery.
Has anyone else got any comments to add there? So the two items I've got that we will take back to the working group chairman of the policy and finance that I've noted is that councillor Oliver was supporting freezing the precept and certainly no increase. And councillor Wildsmith was suggesting that we could look at whether there was ability to reduce, possibly halve the Harlington element of the precept. I say at the moment, our total precept out of the council tax is £102.80 per bandee and £39.37 of that is allocated to the Harlington Fund. So they are the current numbers for those that haven't got them.
Mr Chairman, the purpose of bringing it today was to see if the general view of this council was to freeze the precept, although the precept itself won't be set until the end of this calendar year. The reduction of half of the Harlington Fund is really a council decision, not a, not a policy and finance or budgetary consideration. We can actually plough that back into the numbers and the Harlington group can look at the impact on the finances as they build up to actually repay any loan or whatever it turns out to be, to provide a new facility or refurbish existing building. But it's a, it's a poor council decision, I believe, and not a policy and finance.
No, what I thought I could do, councillor Holt, is that we could at least model some numbers and when we-
Very happy to do that.
When we present them back to council, we can say, you know, this is scenario A and this is scenario B. Unless I can see any councillors coming forward who suggest that we should be increasing the precept for the coming year, can I assume that we can take it to the working group that it is a, at least a zero adjustment for the coming year?
Councillor Wildsmith's still got his hand up, Mr Chairman.
Do you want to come back?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point of clarification of my point. My first, first suggestion was that we looked at a possible, not removing the Harlington precept necessarily indefinitely, but a suspension for at least this next year whilst everything's reassessed. So that was more of a, behalf of this additional option, but yeah.
I understood councillor Wildsmith, your suggestion was half was used as a reduction for the public and the other half which we take would be used to build up our reserves again. Was that correct?
That was one of the options I, my first option was suggesting it was a complete suspension for the next financial year or as a second option that if we were finding we had budgetary issues because of everything going on, that we could effectively say remove the Harlington precept for next year but use half of it back into the normal precept. So two sort of additional options there, but at least passing on some saving to households who could be potentially struggling a little bit when we ultimately know that things across the county, police and fire will probably go up, so it might help people out a little bit.
We can readily bring those options to the next council meeting, Mr Chairman.
We can model those, Peter, and see how they come out.
Thank you, chairman.
Could I, so we actually have a positive move forward. Councillor Oliver, did you want to propose at least that we have a freeze on any increase in the council tax and I can get that seconded and we could vote on that?
I would be very happy to propose a freeze on the precept for next year if this council was happy to support it.
I'm happy to second it, sir.
Thank you. So will all those in favour of at least directing the working group to freeze the council tax in their calculations, please raise their hands. Janet, have you got that number both from raised hands and physically raised hands?
It's a majority. Can I, can we also please have the anyone against, just so I can double check the numbers that-
Against that proposal?
Your hands still up, Alan.
Sorry, Alan, do you want to drop your hand on that one?
Which Alan are you talking to?
Oliver.
Hope.
Oh, Hope, sorry, it's Alan Hope.
What hand is that on?
That's it, okay, thank you.
And anyone abstaining for the record?
Richard, councillor, councillor Robinson.
Councillor Holt, you abstaining?
And I assume you are, Mr Chairman. She didn't vote.
I voted with the first.
Oh, fair enough.
Janet, do you have a record?
Yes, we don't.
Thank you. So the motion is so moved. We will say, instruction to the working group councillor Holt is that we will work on the basis of zero increase in the precept, but we will model those suggestions from councillor Wildsmith.
Understood, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Item eight seems a bit premature, but I did notice the other day that chocolate father Christmases had appeared in the supermarket, so it looks as though Christmas is upon us. Item eight is just approve the proposal from the clerk for the Christmas closure arrangements. The recommendation is to approve the closure of the town council from the midday on Tuesday, the 24th until December 9am on the 4th of January.
May I, may I add to that, that the staff take those as days holiday?
Outside the statutory holidays. Yeah. Does anyone have any objection to that proposal? Councillor Wildsmith, you raised a hand?
It's not an objection, it's just an observation. We have this come up to council every single year and it kind of seems something, but I can't see that anyone is ever going to object to. Is there any way we can put it in that that is agreed unless councillor instructs otherwise? I can never see a reason why any of us are going to object to them having the time off between Christmas and New Year.
That, that's the present constituency council that we have, councillor Wildsmith. In the future, it might not be so benevolent, that's the potential, I suppose. So nobody objecting? Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, chairman, no, I'm not objecting, I'm just, all I just want to make people aware of and also people watching this, is that we do actually have an emergency service that operates during that period. So if somebody really needs to contact the town council, we do have a, a service that is answered. So I think it's that was, I would support councillor Wildsmith saying, we just need to, this happens every year, we have a backup emergency service contact number, we ought to just say, Janet, you can do this every year, you don't have to keep bringing it back to council.
I think if everyone was happy for the life of this council, we could quite happily do that. We can't commit future councils, but if everyone would like to be satisfied that that was the arrangement for the future of this council.
Yeah, I, I propose councillor, I would second councillor Wildsmith's recommendation, even though he hasn't spoken yet.
As a point of orders, if we're going to do this, do we need to vote on suspending, seeing that wasn't an option in the motion, do we need to vote on suspending standard orders to bring it forward as a motion and option to clear it up?
We would do, you're correct, councillor.
Can I propose then that we suspend the standing order 16 or something, is it? And that we put that through then, please?
Does anyone object to us doing that? Thank you. So the proposal from councillor Wildsmith is that it becomes an annual event that the office will close between the midday of New Year's, sorry, Christmas Eve and open again on the first working day of New Year. So I have a second of that, councillor Oliver, you were second reading it?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favour, and it will save it coming back again next year?
Mr Chairman, may I just say that sometimes it isn't Christmas Eve, sometimes it's closed on the Friday, which happens to be the last Friday before Christmas. It's not always Christmas Eve. I think last year it was different. I think Janet might be able to confirm that, but it's not always Christmas Eve that they close it, sometimes it's lunchtime, so they don't have to open on the Monday if it's Christmas Day on the Tuesday or whatever.
It's usually the last working day before Christmas.
Yeah.
So if we amend it to be that, thank you councillor Jasper, we can do that. Janet, it looked like it was supported?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. So for the office staff, you can tell them Christmas has come early, thank you. Item nine is the, the Harlington, we're on to items to note, and as I'm saying, the thing I referred earlier, I did just pop in today, it's great to see the Harlington devoid of scaffolding. The officers who are in are doing final additional wiring for the new streaming system, there's some final decoration going on, they've done some table layouts to demonstrate they can meet the Covid separation requirements. And I know that Alex is working very closely with our health and safety advisor to make sure that he's meeting all the statutory requirements in terms of spacing access. I know they're working on a, an app for people with smartphones so that they can order drinks and other things on an app to try and speed up the, the service. Because as you understand, I think you will understand, we will have to have table service in any future event. We cannot have members of the public going up and queuing at the bar. So it will all be table service. But I say they're doing a great job and we're hoping certainly by the end of next week, Alex was saying was everything should be finished, all the, all the wall- Alex was saying was everything should be finished, all the wall panels back in place, final decoration completed and ready to open to the public. So it seems like it's been going on for a long time, but we are, say, virtually there. And I personally would like to say thanks to those officers that have worked throughout the shutdown period to make sure we've got into this this final situation. Any comments on the current state? So if you get the chance to ask to be admitted and pop your head in, please do.
Councillor Wright would like to speak.
Councillor Wright. You're muted, councillor Wright.
Apologies, press the hand button instead of mute button.
Thank you. Item 10, Calthorpe Park Playground. There is a note there that it's open. It has been apparently very successful at the start. We have lots of young families. A number of teenagers are enjoying the facilities. I did take the opportunity, then if I could add, I took the opportunity on Saturday afternoon, soon after the rain stopped, to go and look at the condition of the playground and the park area, the lower field. And I'm very pleased to say there was a good flow on our land drainage system. There was no flooding on any of the areas of playground. The fully draining surfaces were working perfectly. And the vast majority of the green areas, which used to be slushing up your ankles in water, were perfectly accessible. There was no surface water on the area. So thank goodness, our land drainage system seems to be working adequately. There's one or two puddles, but they are minor puddles. I think it's just due to a bit of local compaction where the contractor came out and they can be dealt with, I believe, quite readily. So that was all functioning well and we have got the contractor back tomorrow and Friday. And I think I'm right, Janet, to hopefully complete the couple of identified defects that he had to come back and deal with.
Tomorrow and Friday and two days next week.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Oliver?
Just a comment, Chairman, because I, you know, it's at the end of my road, the new Calthorpe Park. And one of the things that we had was our centrepiece in the Calthorpe Park development plan that we put in what, three, maybe four years ago? And I must go past there three or four times a day. And I've never seen the park since it's opened not have half a dozen or a dozen children in. You know, it seems to be very, very well used already. And the conversations I've had with people is, has been just positive, saying the only negative comment I had is, when can we do this with the views? Yeah, about, because people say we've go there, we've come down from the views because the Calthorpe Park is so much better now. And they actually take the time to walk 10 minutes with children in buggies to come to that. They say, when are you going to do the same with the views part? So I think it's been a fantastic success so far. And now we can concentrate on other play parks.
That's true. One of the things you know is we used a large part of the section 106 monies for recreation in doing that. We haven't, as we keep saying, we haven't got a lot more development land available in the town council area. So our ability to accumulate any more 106 monies, I think is going to be quite restricted. So if we want to do, and we would love to do, future improvements like the views, councillor Oliver, we'll have to find a way of raising the money within the council. But no, thank you for those comments. As I say, I think it has been very well received. Moving on, item 11, regrettably, we have to announce, as we have there, that we have had one of our councillors resign. It is sadly through continuing ill health. We had hoped over the last few months that he would be able to return and join the council. But unfortunately, as I say, his personal position is that it's just proved too difficult, unfortunately. And so councillor Kirkpatrick has offered his resignation, which does create a casual vacancy. As the clerk has noted there, it will now be advertised. And if 10 or more residents from the central ward request a by-election, that's how we'll have to proceed, but not until May next year under the Covid regulations. But if we don't get that request for an election, then we will have the opportunity to co-opt. And once we've gone through the notice period, say there's no response, then we will call for co-options. But as I say, if we could just send our thanks to councillor Kirkpatrick and just hope him, hope he can maintain good health as long as possible. Item 12 on their fleet link, councillor Oliver recently asked for why we didn't have a detailed report at the last meeting and called for one this meeting. I submitted a report, which I hope you've all read. Fundamentally, we have not had an update of data from the RVA who run the service on our behalf. And I have been pressing Hampshire County Council bus officers to get that information so we can have a formal meeting with RVA and assess what impact has been of the Covid shutdown. As I say, partly because we had to reduce the capacity of the bus to meet social distancing and we don't know how many residents are actually using the service. So we do need some factual data. And as soon as I get that, I hope we'll have that for the next meeting. We've also arranged a meeting with Church Crookham Parish Council, who you may be aware are co-funders of the scheme, to discuss the future with them. Just as an aside to that information that I gave in the report, because what's interesting is I put at the bottom, the number of registered users is 135, of which 76% are female and 89% of the users are over 70. So we are servicing, you know, a very focused group of people who I think need some sort of community transport to get into shopping or, you know, getting out of the house and about. The total commitment, as you know, for Fleet Link is just around £40,000 a year, which seems an exceptionally high cost for running a very small minibus. But I think it does have to be put a little bit into perspective because our contribution to that is about £13,500 a year. Church Crookham Parish Council put in about £6,000. The county are the major contributor at £20,000. If we elected to not continue with Fleet Link as a contract through Hampshire County Council, we would lose that £20,000 subsidy that comes from the county. And we would have to find a way of operating some sort of support transport system out of the £13,500 we've currently budgeted. And to put that £13,500 to perspective, we this year have 10,548 bandy equivalents, that's our tax base. So each household contributes £1.28 a year towards the Fleet Link bus. Which if you break that down further is £2.50 a week per bandy household to provide that service. So I believe it could be improved, it could be made much more efficient and that we should explore. But I think we just need to keep in view that if we actually removed ourselves from the Fleet Link contract, we don't get that county subsidy and it isn't a lot of money to organise other facilities. But it's something that we will bring forward once we've got more detailed data to discuss with you. Comments or questions? No? Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Chairman. And thanks for bringing the updated report because, you know, I had a concern last month that it's just, shall we say, rolling on. What I want, I do understand about maintaining, getting Hampshire to keep funding it. Sorry, I'm getting a lot of echo back here. Is it due to somebody not being on mute? No?
No, I think so.
All right, okay. Because I think Hampshire, if we look at alternative models, because my concern is about the per capita cost of this service. Not the service in anything. I think it's a very valuable service to the people of the town. But I think as with, as Hampshire looked at it some time ago, about some of the bus services, an on-demand disabled access taxi service may be far more cost-effective for the limited number of people we actually serve. So all I want to ensure is that we're looking at all the models and that we just don't have this focus on purely bus transport, but we should look at the kind of service that those residents that utilise it now need. And when we looked at the per cost of each, shall we say, trip, we were talking of nearly £14, £14 a trip on that bus. And we were, that we were charging residents about £3.50 or £4 for. So I think we need to look at the models to actually support those residents in our town in the most cost-effective manner of actually getting them about to. And I particularly want to make sure that we can actually support them in their trips to hospitals and medical centres rather than to go to community centres or shops. I think it's very important that we kind of facilitate that in the, in the current climate. But the reason I asked for this report was just to make sure that we're looking at all the options. And I just want, looking for that assurance. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. No, duly noted. I understand the point. Does anyone else have any comments? Councillor Will? Have to unmute, Jan?
Is that better?
That's it. We've got you. Thank you.
Okay. No, I just wanted to say I completely agree with what's just been said about that. It's something that I think is very important and getting the balance right between being able to support people that need the service, but not it costing as much as it is at the moment. So I think it's something, it's come up over the last few years, whether, you know, how we should, how we should be looking at this. And I think we need to keep doing that because it is a service we've got to keep. But at the end of the day, we don't want to be paying so much and offering taxes because we've gone through this issue before many years ago, where if you go towards the taxi side of it, it could be cheaper with the people that are using it now. Or well, for the council, for the people that are using it now, but then a lot more people might want to go into taxis as opposed to the bus, especially at the moment, you know, wearing masks and all the problems that there is. So I think we've got to be very careful how we look at this and if we do want to change it or not. Thank you.
I mean, we are acutely aware as well that we understand that community care, who you know, transport people to Frimley Park Hospital predominantly, that they have a problem post-Covid because I believe they've lost a lot of their drivers. And they have drivers who are not prepared, you know, to continue with the service. And so there probably is going to be a community that do want access to hospital, which we know is on public transport, very, very difficult. So it's something, thank you for those comments.
Can I just come back on that, Chairman?
Yep.
I agree with exactly what you're saying and what's happening and I've seen it. And I do know people that are using their own cars to get people to hospitals and that. But when I was talking to a few of these people, it's the age now that some of these people are having to not do it because they're getting older themselves and don't feel you know, they don't feel confident enough to be taking other people. So somehow I think we've got to start looking at bringing younger people in. But I'm not quite sure and it's not for tonight anyway, but we do really need to look at trying to get other people that have time within their week or their working week, especially now that a lot of people are working at home, which makes a big difference. They're not having to go into London and spend that time. So I think we really need to get a little group together or some, sit down and talk about how we can continue this, make it better and use more people that are actually working at home now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Will. Right, if we move on to item 13, just to note there that Fleet Cricket Club want to improve the interior of their clubhouse and modernise their clubhouse. As it says, the changes do not require planning permission. But as I say, under the terms of our lease, they need to seek our approval to proceed with the work. Theoretically, this should have gone into items for decision. It says these works intend to better support the club's growing adult and junior teams. Would any member have any objection to the cricket club improving their facilities entirely at their own cost? It looks like no one is raising their hand. Thank you. I think we can. Councillor Oliver?
Sorry, sorry, Chairman. I'm not raising my hand to object to it. It's just as the representative on their management committee. I just wanted to update you on where they are in this process. They have engaged architects. It is within the existing footprint. They're an extremely well-run community club. They look after their own books, they wash their own face, as it were, and they provide sporting facilities for hundreds of young people in the community, as do Fleet Town Football Club, I might add, who I'm also pleased to represent the town council on. So I think this is just a general improvement of their infrastructure and their architect is well-engaged with them, looking at the proposal. So they're going to work within their lease and any town councillor that has young people that are keen on cricket, they ought to support them. Okay, there's some really good coaches down there. So I'm just doing a little ad for Fleet Cricket Club, okay? Because they're, they're a very, they're one of the best-run local community clubs I've seen for a very long time. Sorry, Chairman, for that ad, but I thought I'd just do it like it on Facebook.
Thank you, councillor Oliver. No, they are, they are a very good group. They are well-run. I totally agree. Item 14, again a somewhat bureaucratic item. We just have to record publicly if there are any complaints lodged against the council that we then have to formally deal with. As you can see, the first three complaints were related to the construction work when it was ongoing at Calthorpe Park. That work, as we said, now has substantially completed, apart from them coming back to do a couple of remedial works over the next couple of days. So they hope it can be responded to. And the other complaint about children on the skate park not socially distancing. And there was one complaint concerning an officer that has been dealt with within our internal procedures. So that is just for you to note that we have to formally record any formal complaints from the public. They are all being dealt with. They are all being dealt with. Item 15 is the Covid update. Um, Janet, as clerk, would you like to make any comment on that, on your report, on the on the Covid situation?
Yes, we're um we're both basically got now, the whole of our offices now are Covid secure for the officers. Uh, visitors to the building have to come in, make appointments or have, we have to know they're coming. So as the groups come in, it we have a very strict uh procedure for allowing them in and it is everyone is following Covid procedures completely. Um, basically, there's the other main thing is, I think, we still, just to let you know, we still haven't heard from Zurich, the insurance company, to see whether or not we are covered by the business continuity insurance. They are still, what was the words they used, were looking at uh the High Court judgment to see if their wording um is applicable. So we keep our fingers crossed, but as I say, we still don't know. That would be a great help to us at the moment, but we, no, no way can anyone guarantee on it. That's all. Thank you.
Item 16, meeting dates. Um, you've you've got a copy of the um latest version. This this version, in fact, was circulated to all members back in June. Uh, it was a slight amendment to the date shown at the annual meeting and it was notified that there was a mistake in it. This was actually circulated to all members and you all received hard copies which were distributed by the officers uh back in June. But the key thing that has been pointed out there, that the public did not have general notice of, is that our meeting, our annual meeting in May is the 12th of May. That was only one, you had previous notice of it, it is purely that it now becomes public, so the public are aware of that date. Item 17, um Janet, it's back to you on the clerk's report. Is there anything you wish to particularly bring up to the meeting tonight for members to be aware of?
Uh, as you know, we were planning to have a Calthorpe Park Action Day around in the play area. Um, we didn't get many members coming forward, so if you're anywhere perhaps directly after this Mason's closed, um if you've got dairies and can make it, perhaps we could sort out another date that's more suitable for everyone. Um, when we do the Action Day, it will be following Covid rules and it will be in groups, no more than six people, although when you're doing it, to be honest, you're not with anyone closely by when you're litter picking, et cetera. Um, so yes, um Remembrance Sunday is looking like there will be no service this year in the Harlington. However, the British Legion are looking at having a reef-laying service in Gurkha Square. Um, and one member from each contingent will lay a wreath. Um, it will be completely socially distanced and and we, they are hoping to maybe live stream it somehow so that people can watch it from their homes, but that is still, I think, still being looked at. Um, and oh, we had a, we had contact from HTC asking us our views on markets and car boot sales in the in the car parks on a Sunday. Um, it is Hart District Council's, um obviously, their decision. The only thing we've reminded them of is that we do have a an agreement with them for the market in Gurkha Square on Saturday and also six Sundays. So all we've asked is that when when, if someone comes in on Sunday, that whatever they're doing doesn't clash with what, if it's a date we've got something on. But actually, if there is something else on, it could actually help each other, you know, more people in, sound more fruitful. Um, I think that's it. Anyone else got anything else? Peter?
Councillor Wildsmith had a comment.
Yes, it, um, uh, off, uh, point of the car boot reminded me, I actually had confirmation from one of Hart's officers yesterday regarding car boots in the temporary um window for the time being, that the operator who was doing it on Sundays um has been given permission and was spoke to yesterday, um say he can do them through, um at least through until November whilst they sort out their arrangements. So they should be coming back.
So Sundays in Victoria Road Car Park, Peter?
Uh, that's correct, yes.
Thank you. I think anything, Janet, on Remembrance Sunday is, I think it's in the, the moment, as you say, at the end, it looks as though the ceremony will be in the morning unusually for Fleet. Um, so anybody that wants to watch or, we're not sure what social distancing can be allowed in Gurkha Square, um but it will be a morning ceremony this year rather than afternoon.
Councillor Oliver.
Councillor Oliver? You're muted.
There, yeah, I knew I'd get it wrong once tonight. So, um, yes, on the car boot sale, I I spoke to Sanjay, with Sanjay Baggot, who actually runs these, um, yesterday as well, uh because I knew that there'd been some breakdown in communication in the previous week. I wouldn't want people to go away and think that these car boot sales, boot sales will be reinstated from next weekend for the next five weeks or six weeks because he's going to do it as a commercial operation in Victoria Road Car Park. And if the weather's not good, he's not going to spend his time putting the banners up and doing it because nobody's going to turn up. So the, I really wanted to be able to extend my executive decision from Hart District Council from the five weeks to do till the end of Christmas, but that was not possible because of the vagaries of local government rules. Uh, okay, so we couldn't allow uh Sanjay to continuous car boot sales in Victoria Road without going through due diligence and a um and a tendering operation for the long-term uh future of this. So I I don't, if the car boot sales don't turn up in Victoria Road Car Park over the next few weeks, it's not because he doesn't have permission, it's because he doesn't think he's going to get enough people there and he's not going to make any money. Okay, because it's a commercial operation for him. Okay, so uh please don't write into the district council saying, why isn't it there? Okay, he has authority if he wants to set it up. Okay, so I'm just trying to limit the email traffic, uh Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, there being no further business on tonight's agenda, uh I just have to announce the time and the venue, which is virtual, for the next meeting, which will be Wednesday the 4th of November at 7:00 PM.
Just about coming to the end, it's good. I've spoken, but it doesn't.
So with that, I pronounce the meeting closed at 20:39. Thank you all for your attendance and we'll catch up very soon. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillors, before you leave, come, if anyone is interested in helping at the Calthorpe Park Action Day, it will